We're on. Good afternoon. It is Thursday, May 16th. I'm calling a special meeting of the board and directors of the water authority. It's just past 3:30. We have a call and a meeting to order. The main topic is East Bay pipeline leak and what's going to happen next. I'll call upon you, Pam. Bring us up to you.
Well, I included some of the pictures we've been sending out. As you can see, we dug a couple very deep holes looking for the leak where we were getting water coming up in the Port of Providence. We're having some significant surfacing there, so we started digging for the leak. Did not find it. We chased it to the east, which is where the pipe starts diving under the river. And as you mentioned, we were down about 20 feet and did not find the leak, but it's still coming up below ground. One of the pictures shows you how, actually, how deep we were. And it shows you a section of the pipe. The pipe we found was actually in very good shape. We didn't find any issues or any sign of deterioration in the pipe at all. And at that point, we got beyond the ability to dig any further, so we decided to button up the hole. Just at the very end of that process, we decided to turn the main back up higher pressure to see if there was a better chance of actually hearing the leak. So Dave, our distribution foreman, had actually put some correlating equipment on the pipe to see if he could hear it, that it was just really, the area was just too noisy. They turned off the pumps for him and so on, but he couldn't find it. Meanwhile, the east Providence side of the pipeline, we started to notice water coming up there. We had had a report the day before. We tested it. It was groundwater. After we increased the flow from the pipeline through the leak, we started seeing some Providence water coming up on the east Providence side of the pipe. That indicates that the leak can be anywhere in the pipeline. Just here, a little schematic.
I'm sorry. Maybe what you said to me was so unbelievable, I don't understand. There was water coming up on the east Providence side?
Yes, as well as the Port of Providence.
And the east Providence side is at a much higher elevation than the Providence side, is it?
It's at a higher elevation, which is probably why it didn't show up until just recently.
When did you say the leak?
Because as the increase, because the law, it's going to come where as the east gets, it's going to come out at the lowest elevation.
But if you have water coming out at this level, you have water coming out at this level?
Yeah.
They turned up the pressure.
Right.
They turned up the pressure, so then it might be that the area's full and easier to go in the other direction.
We're seeing more of the water out of the leak, because we're not flowing it through the whole pipeline.
And originally, you found this leak based on meter readings?
Yes. So Pam, the...
What actually, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
What actually occurred is the leak at the golf course, the golf course employee had noticed one month ago. He noticed water in the sinkhole. Then it went away. That coincided with us starting pumping on the other side of the river to draw down the water.
What golf course are you talking about?
Silver Spring Golf Course.
East Providence?
Yeah, that's where it comes out.
It's a little five-hole golf course. It's the mobile, the executive golf course. Now, at the edge of that, where the pipeline came in, there was a sinkhole, and he noticed it was wet, and he never said anything to anybody. And then it went away.
The sinkhole has existed for some time. It's not related to this, right?
It shouldn't?
The sinkhole you mentioned is...
It sounds like it's related to this.
It's been there forever?
No.
No, it's because of this?
Probably because of this. And it's not big. It's foot-deep, foot-and-a-half-deep, laryo-ral. But that water there disappeared, you know, as you said, a couple of weeks ago, which would coincide when we started the pumping effort in pumping all the water out of the Providence side. So we were drawing it that way, and as Allison, then where's the pressure, and then even the water came back toward Providence. Now, when we stopped pumping in Providence, and David opened up the valve, pushed the water through, then it popped back up on the east Providence side.
So Pam, here's what I don't understand, because I'm not a water engineer, but it goes under the bay. I would expect logically, if the leak is somewhere under the water, it would be leaking out into the bay, and we wouldn't see anything in terms of sinkholes.
It's in a rock, bedrock tunnel.
Oh, so it just...
That's under going, seventy feet.
It was on both ends.
Right, there's no place for the water to just go, except to follow the pipeline up through.
Okay. So the conclusion, then, is it's somewhere under the bay that the leak exists?
Somewhere, yes.
Okay.
We know there's a leak because there was a change in the meter flow.
No, I recall you said that the last week.
So what I'm showing here is just a diagram of essentially how the pipeline was drilled. It was actually started on the east Providence side and came out through to the Port of Providence. And why this is important is to show that it's actually a smooth pipeline.
There's no bends.
There's no bends in it until it got, it came up into about eight feet below the surface, where they connected a bend in at that point.
And that was where you first thought there were...
That's where it was. It was, correct. And that's about the area where the leak was coming up.
And the material again of the pipe is...
Pass that down? The pipe is, that was a coupon we took out at the pipe where we installed the corporation to put in the instrumentation. It's very thick, heavy steel, so it's hard to believe that anything actually happened to the pipe itself. My theory is it was a well. It must have popped. And Ken's got a theory there was an earthquake that day as well.
I remember we talked about that, the seismic activity. So that could have popped a well.
It's possible.
Are there logs in fabrication as to where those wells are that could give you some hint as to where it might be?
It might have been, but we don't have any of that information, and neither does the engineer.
The contractor was from Oklahoma, got a call.
Yes.
This is a well, this is what Iraq did to Kuwait. That's how they got, they were going from their oil field.
Yes.
Bringing it over into...
We installed the corporation for the instrumentation, which should be coming up there too.
It was designed, it was designed by the oil field.
And they're all, I don't know where they're from. Oh, where is the corporation? It's in the Port of Providence, but back more towards the road. So it's actually, the main is about eight foot deep in that spot.
So we dug someplace else?
Yes.
You put the insertion point in, and when you're done with that, you're going to bury that again?
Yes.
What side, what side do you think it's going to?
The instrumentation will be going in in the Port of Providence side.
Is there a particular reason for that side as opposed to east Providence?
It was more accessible.
Okay.
Since we were already there, we already had the equipment there to dig and to install it.
So it has to go with the water flow, to go through with this?
And with this, well, that's, you're right, it's the main reason, because you have to install it so that it flows with the water. So at this point in time, we're looking at turning on the pipe, our East Bay pipeline, sometime before the instrumentation arrives, and then just deal with the leak. We had a meeting yesterday with the EMA, state EMA and the Health Department.
UCE, a minute?
State Emergency Management Agency. And we went through everything that we had been doing to find the leak, what the situation is now, what we're looking to do for possible repairs, and the fact that we're looking at the possibility of turning our main back on, since if we're going to be doing an insertion pipe, which looks like right now the more probable means of repair, it's still going to take a couple of months before we could probably even start that. And we'd be going through the summertime on the east Providence system, and we are limited to four million gallons a day rate at any given time during the day. That's going to be very, very difficult to achieve. And if we don't achieve that, we are in risk of lowering pressure in our system and losing pressure for fire control. So we were discussing the issue of dealing with the leak and letting it run, and putting our system back online so we would have significant pressure and flow for the summertime, and then doing any repair work in the fall.
Well, before we make that decision, will we know from the tool that's being, the camera that's being inserted, what the problem is?
Yes.
So it seems to me the risk is, if you pressurize that line, the leak could get worse, but it might not.
That's correct. If it gets worse, we will have to transfer back to east Providence system and do significant restrictions in the system, which is what we have an authorization in our next section for the board. But the idea is to try and run it as long as we can, as long as the leak doesn't get any worse, and just put up with having the leak. We did it for a couple of weeks, and it worked fairly well. So we're looking at going back to that and having enough supply and pressure for the summer to get through the summer months.
So let me ask you two more questions. Remind me when that east Providence connection became operational?
And that was, I don't remember, it was...
About a year ago.
About a year ago.
All remain when we actually...
The EMA worked and tied it in.
Yeah, that was my question. So here's my concern, and it really has nothing to do with what's going on today, but it has to do with the fact that this seems to be full of misinformation about the Pawtucket connection. But prudent people, to me, would expedite our connection to Pawtucket, because as you pointed out, the east Providence connection on the bay is significantly older than ours. And imagine what would happen if they have the same problem we're dealing with right now. So I don't expect an answer today, but before our next meeting, I'd like to know what we have to do to expedite that Pawtucket connection as quickly as possible, what would cost, and how quickly could it be affected, assuming that we can go through whatever path in east Providence. So let's just assume we have the permission we need. I need to know what we can do from our standpoint to make that happen sooner.
Well, east Providence is now very interested in installing a pipeline.
They should have been interested four years ago.
Yes. I'm sorry.
We started this, they were very interested in 2012 when they started the study, but politics being what it is, we're at this point. But east Providence is hosting the federal delegation on Monday to try and discuss this whole issue and how critical it is to the East Bay. And we will be hosting the state delegation on Monday evening to, again, forward the concerns that we have and that the issues with the East Bay, including east Providence, are pretty critical at this point.
I think we are in a situation very much like this country faced on December 8th, 1941, in terms of providing water to our citizens. And I, what I need to know, what I think we all need to know, is what can we do to make that connection happen in the next 12 months, 18 months, 15 months? Because the timeline we've had is a considered timeline. It's not an emergency timeline. And I think we need an emergency timeline.
It'll probably be three years, at best.
Yeah, but I don't, I don't know what those assumptions are. Those assumptions might be we spend nine months doing the engineering studies. What if somebody said, "You have to have those done in ninety days"? You know, I don't know, but I think those are the questions we need to ask.
Can things be done on parallel tracks?
Right.
To reduce the total time?
Imagine if this situation had happened 15 months ago, before this connection was operational, and we go from losing 200,000 or 300,000 gallons a day to losing two-thirds of our supply? I don't think we'd be hearing from people on, you know, around town about our water rates. I think we would, we would be facing a public emergency.
Yes.
For months, if not years.
Well, we once had a shutdown. We had water buffaloes years ago.
So, yeah, we consider this to be a serious issue. We should do whatever, we should consider whatever it's going to take to move it as fast as possible.
We do have a route, because Camp Drescher-McKey, there was a regional, they worked on it for a year, and they came up with a route all the way to Pawtucket.
But, it's a big but. It's on Pawtucket Avenue, which is why we're not building our section right now on Pawtucket Avenue. We do have an alternate. There may not be an alternate to go to Pawtucket.
The rest of Phase Two.
Which is, again, high ledge, high utilities. It'll be considerably slower construction, even if we got three crews out there. It's not going to happen overnight.
Multiple crews, multiple contractors, which makes...
No, we discussed that.
Management's difficult, but you'd be able to get more done.
Pam, can we, can we utilize any of the swanfield water?
Only as a last resort, because it's, it's not much. It's less than a million gallons a day, and it would be considered not potable by the Health Department.
Oh, really?
Yeah, so we would have to declare drinking oil water notice for the entire system. But it's there for an emergency backup for, essentially for fire flow, we like.
So you're looking for additional money?
Yep.
And for a resolution on water restrictions, should it... We have water restrictions in place right now.
We do. We haven't had to go into an emergency situation because it's been raining, it's been cold. We get, our water consumptions have stayed pretty well below what we were looking for, so we've been using less than 3 million gallons a day. What we're more worried about is the temperatures start going up, especially getting into the summertime, and it starts drying out quite a bit.
I think we need to do that. I don't think we have a choice.
Wait. If they open the pipe back up, as you initially said, and you go back and you're leaking 200,000 gallons a day, which is, and it doesn't go bad, I think all restrictions should be lifted and let it go until such time as we're ready to implement the change?
That's the intention.
Don't implement, because I heard, somebody heard from guys on, the waterfront in Bristol shut down water, and they just went back on today because they're on a well. They didn't realize this.
Okay.
So they're putting water signs up that says this is well provided and such. But if we're going to go back, if you're to put that main pipe back up, we should just go back to normal operations, continue the development until such time as we're ready to, you know, find the leak?
Right.
And get everything in place, ready to go, and then in the fall, when the water consumption drops back off possibly, we could go back to where we are today.
I agree with you, but I think we need to authorize severe restrictions, because if we have a further problem?
Right.
You don't want to have to wait to come back to us.
That's what we're asking, so that we have a resolution before you, and that would only be put in place if we had to go back to east Providence, if, once we were on our transmission, back on our transmission main, we'd, everything would go back to normal.
Or if our leak gets worse.
If the leak gets worse and we have to go back to east Providence, we are very restricted for water supply from them. It's because the pipe, we, pipeline is only a 16-inch. It can only carry some of water before it starts causing problems. That's why we're looking to put in a 24-inch pipeline that would have given us all the supply we needed.
Pam, do you have any idea how long it'll be before you'll have some idea of what the condition of the pipe is?
Once the instrumentation run is done, we are actually going to be there and watch them do it. So it's a...
When is that scheduled?
Pardon me?
When is that scheduled for?
It's either Monday or Tuesday, was the latest I heard, but they hadn't had it en route yet, so we're not absolutely positive.
But at a reasonable time.
But early next week is what I'm being told.
And where's it coming from?
I don't know, but they're all over the country, so whatever they had available, they're sending out.
Is this the same thing we were waiting for a month ago?
No, what we were going to do a month ago was a different type of instrument, which needed a much different type of input. But what that one would have done was measured, it's a magnetic resonance, which would have measured the thickness of the steel as well. So at this point, if we're really looking at just sliplining the pipe, the thickness of the steel isn't an issue. We're really more interested in where is the leak and what does it look like?
Now, you, I don't want to get ahead, but I'll ask the question anyway. You mentioned in the article that I read that sliplining would be, I forget, 17 and a half inches?
Yes.
What does that do to the flow?
It does restrict the flow, just as we're restricted with that 16-inch main going to a 17-inch main gives us plenty of flow. It makes it more problematic to also supply east Providence in an emergency. That pipeline was originally designed to be able to supply both systems if we needed to. We can get seven and a half million gallons a day through the pipeline, but that's going to be about the max. It'll start dropping the pressure, it will drop the pressure, so we will have to pump. East Providence also has a pump station there, but any more than that will start also causing problems.
So the pipe is 24 inches?
It's actually 23.
23.
Yeah.
So is the sliplining pipe limited because of the material, or is that the largest they make, or...
It's, 18 inches is the largest we could fit inside the pipe and be able to pull it through, and even that's questionable.
Okay.
But we're saying that's probably the smallest we could go and be able to get enough water supply. They do have a 20-inch, but they said you would have so little clearance, you might not be able to even pull it through the pipe.
You wouldn't want to do that.
No.
Has east Providence given any thought, thinking about looking at tapping into Pawtucket supply at that time?
Yes, yes, they've been looking at, well, it's not going to be a short-term issue.
I know.
So they've actually discussed maybe laying a pipe along the ground, but then you've got to bury it because you've got so many street crossings and driveways and so on and so forth. They have to go up about three miles into Pawtucket to be able to connect to a transmission main as well. So to be able to get anything of substance, there's, there are existing connections that they have with Pawtucket. They're small, from one end of the distribution system to the other. Ken can tell you, they connected in the year that Providence had their 102 break and they shut off the wholesale customers. So they were using the east Providence or the Pawtucket connection to east Providence, and ended up with a number of problems, I understand. It wasn't sufficient, for one thing.
But even in, if I, nobody's supposed to be correctly, when Jamestown used to have water supply problems, they used to run a line across the old Jamestown Bridge canal to North Cape Town.
They had a line across.
So anything's possible, I guess, my point.
But you're not going to get much water out of it.
No, no, it's not a perfect solution, for sure, but, but when you're in a crisis moment, you look for those pen dates.
Yeah, they can get a little bit of water from Pawtucket, but not enough to serve the system. So they're, you know, they're also very much looking at Pawtucket pipeline at this point as well.
You know, I'm from Missouri. They've been contemplating a lint in their navel for years. I don't think...
You're talking about east Providence?
I'm talking about east Providence. I think we need to do what we need to do, and if they want to go ahead, that's great, but I don't think we can delay any further, hoping that they'll be reasonable or rational.
Except that I can tell you from the several times that I've been involved over the last several years competing with them, the atmosphere is totally different, totally different, for the positives.
That's good, and I hope that continues.
I'm just saying the way...
But we would be much farther ahead if we had decided five years ago that they were sitting, twiddling their thumbs and moved forward.
But not necessarily, because the problem was, you're going through their town.
I understand that, but we could have gone to the state, in my opinion, and gotten relief on that problem.
That's, that's another question.
Yeah, that's a question.
We tried everything.
That's right.
And we did proceed with our, our effort.
Yep.
That's why we're as far as we are.
Yeah, which, which is where we come to this. So if this is an editorial, and it looks like it is, or is it a letter to the editor? It sends editorial. This is incorrect information.
Oh, you mean the one that just came out?
Yeah.
That's true. That's true.
And people read this and they assume it's possible.
Well, that's, that's one of the big problems. I mean, the article was in the Gazette yesterday. It was completely misleading, you know, and they don't understand the pain that we went through trying to keep this plant open and keep those supplies from it.
But they don't understand, and they have incorrect information.
But this is the news media.
Saying nothing.
This is the news media that's doing this. They didn't help us a bit.
They've had plenty of information.
Oh, they did.
They've been, they've gotten the same updates that the board's been getting every single day.
And we'd have a meeting at the meeting, and they wouldn't even attend, and then you'd read an article on the paper.
Can they recall, when we had the meeting down in Bristol, the tri-town meeting, and we laid it all out again, and then finally, finally, we said, "We're going to do it. We're just going to go ahead and do it." And we didn't get any flack from the public, because I think all the information was there.
I agree. I think the citizens of Barrington, Warren and Bristol are very much in favor of, "Let's have an alternate supply" yesterday.
Your, your point is very well taken. We can certainly get that information, and we can, we can certainly show how fast it could be done, full speed ahead, with all of the roadblocks that have to be crossed.
Let's assume for a moment that our pipeline was totally broken, and we were reliant only on east Providence and whatever we could get out of the very poor quality reservoir. What would we do then? And I think we need to present that as Plan B and understand the time and the pause to make an educated decision.
We could probably pull some of that together pretty quick, because they, they have engineers who've dealt with this.
I think that's a very good idea, but just what are you looking for today, Pam?
Well, today's a resolution, right? And the money?
Yes.
So I move to approve the resolution as presented.
I'll second.
Has everybody had a chance to read it?
No.
Why don't you take a moment to do so?
That's why it takes so long to get the pipeline...
Let's pass that bill so we can find out what it says.
No, I read it. I'm confident.
They all have that chance to read it.
Did our attorney read this?
Your attorney wrote it.
It's my assumption.
You'll ask the question again. Did our attorney read it?
So read it.
I tweaked a couple spots, Joe.
Yeah, I, I had to finish it and jump in the car to get over to the stuff. That's Pam to proofread it.
Yeah, Pam, I think there might be one, I heard it's a...
I made...
There might be one or two.
The last, where I said 30-inch transmission?
Oops, I missed one.
I thought it was 30.
We had 30 in every line.
So we got 24.
It's 24.
Place 30 with 24.
Yes.
By the way, we, we have the signs, official signs that we give out if it's supplied by well, their water is, so that means that we've gone there to confirm that they're telling the truth?
What we've, what we've done is we've set up in the custom database on your account that is held, an informational spot for whether there's a well on the property or not. So we have history going back to when the moratorium was on in 1999, 91, of people who had wells. So we've incorporated that into the database, not sure how accurate that is, because it hasn't been used for a number of years. So what we're doing is putting it onto the well owner that they have to call us, talk to the clerk, enter that data in the field, we'll make an appointment, and actually, if there's a question involved, inspect the house, because if they do have a well and we don't have a record, we have to make sure that proper separation between the potable water supply and the well water. So we catch a couple of things up and inspections at the same time we're verifying. The difficulty with the sign, providing the sign, when I checked into it, it's not inexpensive. So the concept of us spending a few thousand printing up signs to give to people that we're not getting revenue from for that purpose. We can, once we get them in the database, we'll have it on IGS, we'll be able to move that into the mapping. So our men in the field will be able to see, identify the houses that have wells or not. So if somebody were to call in, say, twenty-ninth Smith Street, they'd be able to check in the office here and would be able to check in the fields to whether that was valid or not. The signs are total necessity. I think it's more of if the homeowners put something on a codex, then maybe their neighbors wouldn't call up as much and we wouldn't have that much information circling and cycling.
From my recollection is before, when there were water restrictions, people put their own signs up. I don't think they were supplied by.
No, no, they weren't. But if this gets to be a much more serious situation, we certainly don't want to have people accused, accusing their neighbors incorrectly, causing strife within a neighborhood unwarranted. That's why I said we've certified, in fact, that's the case.
How does, my first question, and the first condition of the restriction here was restricting non-such water use and mentions irrigation and recreational use. Does the restrictions apply to commercial users?
Yes.
Does that apply to farmers?
I think we have very many here, but.
I don't know.
Also, I don't use wells, because it's expensive to use.
Does it apply to farmers? I don't know.
Farmers?
I think we would have to have an individual discussion with each one as to whether they had a well and how much water they absolutely needed to use, because we want to emphasize when we get to this step, it's an emergency situation. And if we draw down our tanks, we're in serious trouble.
Yeah, no, I just want to make sure I haven't seen it, because I know on Facebook, and the thing from Facebook came from me and everybody, but I noticed in another group, there were people who are beating up on Boston Bank Five down on Merrickown Avenue, because people say their sprinklers are running in the middle of the night. I sent them an email saying, hey, do you know there's a ban? But in any case, I mean, that wouldn't be, that would be irrigation water, which wouldn't be allowed to be used, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Okay, so now the second one, the.
And you'd be surprised, we have over eight hundred people with wells in our system. So there are an awful lot of wells.
So then the second one, how do you actually do that? The handheld, what, the management staff authorized to allow permitted outdoor water use, which is handheld watering cans? Do I need to apply for a permit? No, seriously, how do you? Well.
Well, in other words, you're not using, you can't use a hose, but you can take your gallon container and water your plants.
Okay, so what, it says that the management and staff are authorized to allow. Does that mean I have to get?
The board is allowing.
Okay. I don't have to come to you and say I'm going to be using a watering can.
No.
Sorry. I don't want to be the one that my neighbors call and complain about, because I'm using a watering can, so.
If we're ready to vote, I think it's important, the spirit of what's going on, to get this passed. It's also equally obvious that in any meeting thereafter, we can modify further and delineate further whatever the details are for any of these elements. Yes, Julie?
I'm just wondering if there's been any consideration given to penalties applied by other municipalities in this country in the event of violations? Is this unique for us, or have other communities followed the same type of penalty and procedures that we are showing here? Or, I mean, is there any baseline for this? I mean, do we know what other communities have done in the past relative to penalties?
In general, but the idea is it's the degree of the emergency, because there's a lot of systems, especially in Massachusetts right now, they have water restrictions and they're restricted, maybe not even watering, because there isn't a sufficient supply to supply everybody at the same time. Their penalties might be sixty dollars to a hundred dollars or so. We're in, if we do this, we're in an emergency situation where it becomes very serious. So we're looking at the idea if we find somebody that is irrigating or watering their lawns, we would go over and give them a warning first, just to say, you know, this is prohibited because of the situation we're in. If you do it again, we're going to turn your water off.
So I guess, are we now in an emergency situation?
No, not at the moment.
Does the public know that?
We've had a water ban on.
And you're lifting it if you go back.
And we're going to be lifting that if we go back to using our pipeline. If we don't go back to our pipeline, and once the weather starts getting better, which is supposed to be in the next few weeks, we would have to enact a full emergency.
So is the water ban an emergency situation, or just a water ban?
It's just a water ban for now, because of the environment that we're in right now. It's been rainy and cold. If people restrict from watering, we're able to stay within that four million gallons of water a day.
But if somebody went out now with a hose to water their green trees or something like that, there would be no penalty?
At this point in time, we don't have a penalty other than saying, telling people that they, there is a water ban and they are restricted from.
Because in my community, people are asking that type of question, and I don't have a straight answer. I'm just trying to understand what the straight answer is, and I think the community should be aware of whatever the policy is at this moment or every day or whatever.
I think we need to put this very clearly on our website in a way that people don't need to go searching for it. You know, latest news on water restrictions and the pipeline break, and then spell it out as simply and succinctly as possible.
And update it probably daily, if it has to be.
Because I know the people in Bristol who do the hanging flowers on the lampposts located a well, so they wouldn't be taking water from the Bristol County Water Authority to water those plants.
I think there needs to be a hundred percent clarity, and I don't think we have that right now. That's the point I'm making. And I'm getting bemoaned with questions like that, and I don't have an answer.
Well, right now, there's a water ban.
Right now, there is a water ban. It's been pretty well advertised.
Is there any thought being given to a public relations firm to get on board with this? So they can spray it out there better than, we're sitting here, we start to understand this. The website is a great thing, but if you have a public relations firm that can actually hit the three towns with the same information and get it broadcast somehow to.
We have had a firm involved, essentially. They've been involved with sending out the letters. We've been working with a code red company, three towns with a code red.
I understand, I'm looking for some splash from, I don't know whether there'll be.
Well, the thing is, do we, if we get to this point, that's a totally different situation where we're at right now.
If we get to this point, I think we are at this point. We told people there's a water ban. Now we're going to lift the water ban, but we might re-impose the water ban. It is confusing. You live this day to day.
I think the definition of water ban has to be completely defined, especially with handheld watering cans.
Can I use my hose? Can I use my hose to fill my watering can? I mean, these are the kinds of questions people are going to be asking.
And that's what they're asking me right now, and I don't have an answer. And that is really bugging the people.
I would offer that just, if we get through the next couple of days, if we do the inspection, if the board seems fit that that policy is authorized, when we find out we have to invoke it, we've got good cooperation with the towns on their Facebook pages, that policy, then we could advertise that in newspapers as an ad, saying, we'll release it, go on the town Facebook. It wouldn't be a problem getting it out afterwards. I think the concern, if we push that out now and we open up our water line, it's contradictory.
I agree with you, but when I go to our website and I look at the bullet point of water restrictions, it says no outdoor use, yard and garden watering, pool use, car, house washing. It says nothing to me about can I use my watering can to keep something alive? And can I fill it with my hose or not?
Can I fill my pool?
No, you can't.
How do you know that?
The resolution is meant, was really designed to put some penalties if we're needed. So really, there was no basis, there was no basis for the staff to really put any penalties in place. So now, what that resolution is doing is giving them the authority to put these particular bans in place and to institute these penalties if needed. So I think that what would happen is if on Monday or Tuesday, a ban's lifted, that's the notice that would go on the website. If not, then the staff has to put, has to clarify it.
Yes, but we, in my opinion, are in an emergency situation, and we need to be prepared for what might happen there.
Next week.
And I don't think we are. And in the software industry, you would go through what I call the grandmother test. Read this information and see if you understand it. You look at it and you think it's very clear, and Ken thinks it's very clear. It is not clear to me.
It's not clear to me.
I know I'm confused now.
Has everybody read this? Would you know what's legal and permissible and what isn't? Because I don't think you would.
I think this has to be sort of updated on a day-to-day basis, and it should be in front of everybody. Because I think, I'm not really confused now, but I think the people in my district are totally confused.
Well, I still don't know if I can fill my watering can with my hose, or if I have to carry it in and fill it with my kitchen sink.
That may not seem important, but to the people in the community, that's really a big deal.
And we have a bad reputation, in my opinion. And I think the stuff on around town just reinforces that. And the more we can do to correct misinformation and provide very simple, easy to understand information.
I, it's pretty obvious to me, it says do not let water run continually. Reduce shower times, use drain barrels to collect water forgotten. I mean, how much more do you have to tell people?
Maybe the suggestion is that the staff comes up with something to post on the website on Monday or Tuesday, if it's lifted and one, if it's put in place. And maybe what we could do is, can't circulate among the board, I can't, we can't have comments, but what we can do is I could send it out in like a blind C C. You could get back to me with individual comments, we can craft it, so that next week we're ready to go with this or that.
I think the point being made, if there are some serious options that have to be taken, and they're what ifs, and they're based on certain things. Putting too much information out there is going to confuse people more than simply taking it a step at a time. If you tell them that we will know by a certain date, within the next several days, we're going to know which direction we're going in.
I think whatever we decide tonight, we should put out a press release. The board has authorized additional funding. This is what is expected to happen early next week, and.
That will determine.
Alternative A, alternative B, alternative C. Because otherwise, people are going to be speculating.
But I would let them speculate. I would say we will then have to make several, to list the alternatives ahead of time is going to confuse people. Because then they'll question, why did you pick A or B or C?
Alan, I disagree with you. I thought from what Pam said, we're going to have the exploratory inspection of the pipeline, based upon what we see.
That will tell us whether we can slip line.
Right, if we can't slip line, I don't know what that means. If we can slip line, it sounds as if you were prepared to go back to our pipeline for the time being until the fall.
Until the slip lining arrives, and the whole thing is set up.
So I think we say that.
It really comes down to whether the leak is at a critical footing as to whether we should be paying now or not, or later.
First of all.
A solution, because I'm.
Right, until we see where it is and what it is, it's very difficult to determine what the next step is going to be.
We can schedule a series of meetings that we can have.
Yeah, but the public doesn't even know what we're doing at this point.
But at those meetings, actions can be taken immediately.
I don't think they have to know either, but I think they're entitled to know what the rules of the day are. And to me, it's that simple. What are the rules today? If they can use handheld watering cans for gardens, that should be up. So much confusion about that. It's a small point, but it's a big point. I think we should just have the rules of the day, what they are, and if they decide to go one way tomorrow, then the rules would change. So it would be the rules of the day until they know.
So you're looking for a little bit more delineation, the detail of the rule, yes?
Clarity.
I'd like to, I mean, we've discussed this in depth in-house, and one of the, if you're saying too much to the public, it gets confusing. Because we're not going to know, the public in the last ten days, most of them now know this restriction. It's taken that long. And if you start saying, Monday we're going to do this, maybe next week we'll turn it on, maybe this. It's going to get, they're going to anticipate that.
I'm not even suggesting that, I'm just suggesting that we say we're going to inspect the pipe, and you'll know more next week, not say we'll turn it on or turn it off.
I don't.
That one has to be tested and everything before.
I don't think they really have to know what we're doing. All they have to know are the rules of the day. Nobody in my district, they'll know about handheld watering cans for gardens and plants. That's not clear. And I think if we could have the rules of the day, that would cover it. We don't have to tell them what we're going to do.
And the resolution doesn't get into all of that. It just says it might have to be reviewed. Can I just?
It's separate from the resolution.
I want to make something, the resolution is just an authorization. So I think we're getting hung up saying, well, now the rule is you can use watering cans. I don't think that's what it's saying. It's saying that if, that the management is given the authority to implement those rules. I also, at the end, it says they have the authority to do anything in their judgment that is necessary, because you don't want to keep coming back here for a meeting every three days to change the rules. So all that resolution is doing, and I don't want to get too hung up on the resolution, the resolution's giving them the authority. So next week, what's going to happen is once they know which path they're going, then they're going to take this authorization which gave them the authority and implement those rules. And I agree, at that time, that should be communicated. But for now, you have a water ban in place.
All right. And I agree with the resolution, I agree with everything said, but I think the people don't understand the rules that are in place today.
Well, we can get that fixed. It's a separation. It's a separation. We can get that fixed.
But I think, you know, it sort of goes along with what's in the resolution, because it has to be, in my mind, clarity as to what they can do today, every day.
But I think the only thing you've mentioned, the only thing you've mentioned that seems to be cleared up is the use of the hose.
No, the.
All the rest is here.
Handheld watering cans.
Yeah, the use of the hose. In other words, we can come out with all this information.
But our website says nothing about handheld watering cans.
Nothing, nothing at all, nothing at all.
Can we fix this?
We can fix it.
I want to suggest that whatever we do, if we're going to make the public, it goes as a press release and not as a paid advertisement to the local newspaper.
Well, the only thing we can do at this point is get on their website.
Ask them as a public service to publish all of my publicity and stuff.
Won't be up till Wednesday, Thursday, next week.
Maybe we've said too much in the therefore be a result, because it says authorized management and staff to take necessary steps, including but not limited to the following. So if we wouldn't just told, said that we're authorizing the staff to take whatever management or conservation efforts are necessary into broadcast, publicize those requirements to the public. We didn't say, we didn't say handheld watering cans and all this stuff at this point.
Well, I think it specifically authorizes to impose fines and to restrictions and to turn off water if necessary.
That's okay, but I said.
So we need to have that authorization.
If at this point you've instructed the watering can thing, then you don't have to deal with that, this.
Well, it's just an example.
But next week, when you make that determination, if you make that determination, you can say, we do allow watering can usage under these circumstances or whatever.
Can I say something? I think we're getting bogged down in all packets of detail. We need to give them the authority to do what they have to do. If they don't do it right afterward, then we're going to come back and ask. If they don't do it right afterward, then we're going to come back and ask them why they didn't do that. But we need to get the authority passed.
That's why I was trying to.
And I don't think we need to be detailed.
I'm fine with giving the authority.
To put whether it's watering by watering, by watering can or hose.
I think it's fine to give you the authority. I'm all in favor of doing that. I'm just saying, we need to communicate carefully with the public and we need to do it in a timely way.
And I think it has to be day-to-day because if we're not clear on any day, that doesn't reflect positively on the communication from the water company. That's what I'm saying. That's my point. And I don't think there's been really clear communication about what the rules are today. And I know the resolution is for the future. But I think it has to be on a day-by-day basis and it has to be totally 100% accurate and clear.
Maybe that's what should be added is authorize management and staff to take all necessary steps to restrict the use of water by the customers as well as communicating the requirements or restrictions.
I think it's not needed.
Not even, it's not needed in the resolution.
If you definitely got authority over that. I think you can just pass the resolution.
The chairman moved.
It's a completely separate issue from communication issues, which are valid.
The points we made are on the issue and the points we made on clarity. The issue here is to get the resolution passed so that staff can move forward with a clear conscience that they can impose fines, they can do these things. That's all. And we can fix things if they need to be fixed. But certainly, the detail, the clarity can be provided. It can be provided daily, it can be provided to the press. But when you look at it, just as an aside, when you look at the kind of article that comes out from the editors of the local papers, you begin to wonder if, you know, do they live in the East Bay? Where have they been all this time?
Now, I have a further question about the resolution. I'm just wondering how everybody feels about the $500 fine. I mean, do we have any idea what type of reaction we would get to that? Does anybody?
You will when you find them, the $500.
Sure, let's find out what happens. You can always change it. You can always change it. I think the point that has been made is that this potentially can be a very serious emergency situation and we're going to mean business.
And I agree with that, but I.
What would you like to add?
That's my question.
But my point, George, is if you're questioning whether the $500 is valid or typical or whatever, what would you want to do to qualify whatever number you would want in there?
Well, as I said upfront, I mean, I would have tried to understand what other communities might have done. I don't know if 500 is right or wrong. It might be the exact number. But I don't see any documentation that might support that number.
My experience. My experience from a regulatory viewpoint of enforcing environmental regulations and actually being successful in extracting penalties from users is that typically this says up to $500. And that, and how that's figured is that, and not to make it complex, but just to explain, typically the agency has this penalty matrix that has these shades of gray so that if it's this kind of offense, it's maybe $100. If it's this kind of offense, it's, you know, $150 and so on and so forth. And so maybe you address it by saying up to $500 fine, meaning that also typically it's a daily fine. Because if the person does it one day, that's one thing. But if you do it two days.
Yeah. If, I get it to check, the $500 came from me. I drew it up. And I'll tell you what, the initial turnoff runs through our current rate structure. So that if we turn you off because you violate the policy, if we turn you back, if we turn you off this afternoon and you call up, we turn you on the next morning or the next day, it's $30, the same as the rate. If you want it turned on at nighttime when you get home, you are paying the penalty of approximately $90 something. Because we have to call a guy in to do this, so we pay him overtime. So you should pay that penalty. The $500 I came up, somewhat arbitrary, but penalty enough because if you're violating and we're in that situation, it puts fire protection at risk. So what's the dollar value to that? And there are people with deep enough pockets that the fine is $50, they're not going to care. So this, I just look at it, if we get to this situation and you get a warning and you get it turned off once already, we can't fix you. So you're paying as much as you feel to make sure that this is disallowed and not doing.
Well, and so both points have to be taken. In the long run, we may develop the grade matrix, whatever.
Let's pass this as a stamp and then correct it if we need to.
Exactly, exactly.
The other thing that would also happen is, you understand it, right now, we're complying, we're under the limit that each company says they can give us. So if we, if we look at it as a laissez-faire attitude toward enforcement because we haven't really had to enforce yet. But when we do go into that, we will have staff in working at night and in the wee hours in the morning. So it's going to be an expense to us because everybody's going to run their sprinklers at 4 o'clock in the morning. And we're going to get phone calls, so we're going to have to go verify that. We'll get the police, we're working with the police departments to help notify if they see that going on. So all this, this snowballs into a big administrative effort in the office here and in the field. So there's an expense. So if somebody causes that type of action to occur, what's the penalty they should pay? I don't know.
All right, so let's move forward.
Thank you.
I need a formal motion to adopt the resolution.
We made one, it was seconded.
It's moved and seconded.
Moved and seconded, okay.
The question was called.
We don't need to, don't need to read it all. Everybody has read it. All those in favor, please raise your hand. It is unanimous.
Thank you.
Okay.
And for additional funding? We're pretty much at that $500,000 amount. Between the engineering, the water treatment, which was relatively expensive, and the contractor, who, as you can see, spent a lot of time and a lot of equipment, a lot of personnel, trying to locate the leak. So to finish this up, we're now sealing up the site and then looking at the results of the investigation and trying to determine what's to be done next. So there will be some engineering time involved in that as well as some of the contractor time.
How much additional funding do you need?
At this point in time, I'd like to recommend another $200,000.
Will that be sufficient?
No.
For, at least for the next period of time.
Will that cover you until the 30th?
Yes.
When we have another meeting?
Most of the costs right now are crude. We haven't received any bills.
Okay, but I'm just saying, we should give you enough money for, so that if we're going to have a meeting on the 30th, if we have to give more then, will this $200 be enough? That's all, just in case.
Okay.
Go ahead.
Shouldn't there be some written statement, you know, showing some detail? You know, as my chair of the finance committee? I would be much more comfortable if we had something in writing, you know, the estimates are boom, 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 and we're asking for $200,000.
I did have, I'm sorry, I did have that.
I think that's a.
Oh, do we have that?
I mean, we don't pay bills, I'm sure. I've been treasuring different organizations unless there's something in front of me to justify writing a check.
Well, at this point, you're authorizing the funds like you would authorize a budget.
Well, I mean, you know, as a director, I would want to see some documentation as to what makes up.
Better get it. She came up with the $200,000, so let's, just take a recess for a moment. So it's quarter to five, we're coming out of the recess. We have the material that our director went to draw. You want to run through this, this quick explanation, Pam, so we can.
Okay, if you look at the second page, it's the summary of the costs as of the 10th of May.
Okay.
And then it's all this background documentation as to the actual bills from each of the companies that have been involved in the project.
Can you just walk us through who Lockwood is and who PURE is?
And of course, Beta is our engineering firm. Lockwood is the firm that was providing the treatment systems that we were required to use by the DEM. That was all the settling basins and the filtering system. Because of the type of material that we were involved in and working in the landfill area. We had to discharge to a culvert that went directly into the bay. So they were very concerned about what the limits would be on the chemicals that were involved and any sedimentation that.
Let me just ask a question there. The water was coming out of the ground. It happened to be coming from our pipeline. And they were concerned about going into the bay, even though it was potable water?
Well, when it was only potable water, it wasn't as much of an issue as when we started to dig and then we started to get a lot of groundwater. And we were getting a lot of infiltration across the water.
And that groundwater is going to go into the bay anyway?
Not necessarily until we opened up the hole. And then we started pumping the groundwater out of it in order to be able to access the pipeline. And of course, the deeper we got, the worse the groundwater got.
And on a comparative basis to what a sample in the bay would have shown, was it worse than what's in the bay?
Yes.
We had to meet fish?
And we were required to meet fish standards, which are stricter than drinking water standards, actually.
Even though the fish live in their own toilet?
Help me understand, fish water standards are higher than drinking water standards?
Yes, because of bioaccumulation.
And who sets those standards?
And that's by the EPA and the DEM.
Well, is it a federal standard or is it a state standard?
Generally, they follow the federal standards.
Okay. Hard to understand the logic of that. And who is PURE?
And PURE is the company that's providing the inspection services.
The inspection of what?
The inspection services for the pipeline. They're the ones that are bringing the instrumentation.
So they brought an instrument in to look at the steel of the pipeline? Was that a?
Not yet. That's what's coming on Monday or Tuesday.
I see.
Okay. The first page is estimating costs going forward. So as you can see, we asked, it's been, up to date, we've hit about $440,000 in costs. The rest is an estimate of where we're going to be going till we can, till we get to the next phase of where we're going to.
So the $50,000 would be for the equipment that's going to go into the pipe and determine what it looks like on the inside?
Yes.
And is that to get the equipment here or is that to perform the service?
That's the total price.
Total price.
The subs for subs, the, the Brito?
To Brito, yes. They had to have, for example, an industrial hygienist on site constantly monitoring for off gases from the pit. That was one of the requirements. So they had.
Off gassing from the pit?
Off gassing from, it was a sealed landfill. So they had to check for.
Because they have a landfill that we went through.
Yes.
Were being, so the innocent are being punished to protect the guilty.
Originally, we were trashed to go across the bay. We were forced into this plumbing system. And it was going to cost 28 million bucks and 28.8. The governor said, we'll pay half, 14 something. It ultimately cost us 34 million.
35.
35 million dollars. Because we ran into courts. We used to, this board used to get the reports of the drilling every day, every week. And all of a sudden, it stopped because we took samples with barges across the bay.
Otherwise, it cost us more because we went through where we were told to go.
Yep, and we discovered that there was, between the places where we took a sample, took a sample, we couldn't get there to take a sample, and there was a line of courts. And so the drill, the drill all of a sudden is not, you know, we got every day, we got the information. You've gone so many feet, so many feet, all of a sudden, you've gone so many inches. And we discovered, we ran into a line of courts we had to get through, which they could do. It took a while and it began to go again. So, you know, who knew? We took all the samples that were required. That's the way it was normally done. Here was something that occurred. We had no idea that it cost us 35 million instead of 28.8 or something like that. And our, our customers, we paid that extra all. So we've done, I think we've done, this board has done what had to be done all the way down the line. You raised an interesting point. If we ask, if we ask the Providence Water System for a decrease in the cost of the water because of the emergency that we can't control. My answer to that was, we probably will. Have we done it right now? No.
Well, we're not actually using their water at the moment. We're buying it from these problems.
Well, we were. And we were running through an extra 200,000 or 300,000 gallons a day.
It's just to say it's, we can ask, but it's highly unlikely, highly unlikely.
And if, if, it's a use.
Went through the meter.
Went through the meter, yep.
So how much are we asking for now? What amount are we asking for?
$200,000.
Another $200,000.
But isn't the page one?
Well, we were lucky, it was about 440, as of the 10th.
So there's 60,000.
So there's the 60,000.
Perfect. And the answer's everything. Every building and everything is here.
Okay.
Pam, the cost to have the insertion point, is that using the 65K that you had in your budget for doing the other insertion point? You didn't touch any of your budget yet?
No, because actually we'll probably be moving that point over to the east side and just do, and do the pipeline from the east side of the bay down through tonight. So we will be doing another insertion point.
So you'll do it twice then?
Yes.
Okay.
Is the 50,000 contingency enough contingency?
Well, for, I think that should be enough to at least get us through to the end of the month and into the beginning of next month.
Because of all the unknown, that's just what.
That's why it's there.
Do you want to make that a larger amount? Make it 2 and 1/4 instead of 2 or 250?
I would suggest 300,000.
But let's not, let's not hold back. If it's an emergency, we don't want to have another meeting.
Right.
I think the question was raised, is staff, the question's raised, is staff tracking this? I said, yes. Here's the answer. They are.
Right, I would be more comfortable authorizing a larger amount so that you don't get ahead of your skis in terms of contracting for more than we've authorized.
At least 250.
So let's get a motion. Let's get a motion.
I'd like to move that we authorize a further $300,000 to investigate and determine what is next between now and when we meet again.
Seconded. Seconded, further discussion? All those in favor, raise your hand. It is clear, your answers. Go to it.
The question about the payment of this, and I'll use the wrong words here, but.
Where are the funds coming?
Yeah.
We have, we have amassed. I won't answer it. I'll let Mark. We've been saving money for part of the grand plan of our finance.
And I told George today, I hope everybody brought their checkbooks with them today. We're fortunate.
With notification upfront.
We're very fortunate today versus where we were 10 years ago that we've been able to build up our cash reserves, which we have that ability without having to go for an emergency bond or lending or anything. Most likely being able to cover whatever we face in this disaster, whatever we want to call it. The initial costs we have, none of these costs, I segregate, I'm segregating all these costs outside of our current budget. And when you authorize $600,000, $700,000, that becomes more like an expense budget item to increase our expense budget for what we call a non-recurring expense. So we'll have everything we pay on this leak segregated, not part of our normal activity, but as a non-recurring expense. And we'll treat that, the auditors will treat that as a one-time item. It's not something that's going to happen every year.
Understand.
So we've thought that out. So we, we do have reserves that we were going to use this cash for projects over the next, as our debt service has gone down, we've been able to put more money away for the infrastructure fund, revenue fund and that. So we, we should be okay, but we'll be reallocating from that cash for capital projects to address this issue.
And we'll deal with, ultimately deal with all that.
What's the dollar amount we have in that reserve now?
So, Frank, I understand you're right. We could, present capital projects would not be affected?
No.
Think that would plan?
None of these costs will go into any items that were in, against capital projects.
I don't think we. I don't think we know if our capital expenditures will be affected until we know how fixable it is.
Yeah, that could change, that could change the way that we're working on the whole system.
Maybe we're not able to do those capital projects because of these restrictions, but it won't change that capital.
Well, but let's not cross that bridge.
Yeah, okay.
We shouldn't jump to too many conclusions. What is our reserve funds amount?
Right now?
Approximately.
Well, 12 million.
The reserves?
We have that broken down into stability, infrastructure, and general revenue fund as unrestricted.
And bonding restrictions.
So let me ask.
There is a number of categories that it covers.
Say, worst case situation, we need 12 million dollars to fix this.
Can't use, can't use all of them.
No, we would have to go for a bond.
Because that, those reserves come into our debt service ratio.
Yeah.
So we need to maintain a certain level that will allow us to keep that debt service ratio, which right now is very good.
What could it be drawn down, about how much could it be drawn down? A million? 10 million?
We could draw it down to a point, but the intent is not.
No, I understand, I'm just trying to get a feel here.
Yeah, we could bring it down to 3 million?
Yeah, two or three.
Okay, so you can.
3 million and still.
You can actually draw.
That sort of ratio is only 1.25.
1.25 is what you must have to cover your.
The year I started, it was 1.26.
Right.
So we built that up to almost, almost eight, with the, under the current audit.
Right. Which also affects when we do additional bonding. It's positive that we have that extra amount anyway.
But it gives us much better rates.
No, we go back to, if there's an emergency, what can they do?
Yep.
We're in a good spot that we can tap that without any red tape or going.
Plus, the idea is too, we were, the board had decided too, we would build up a 90-day reserve for operations expenses as well, so that's included in that. So you can't draw all of it down, which we're required to keep at least 60 days, and in addition to that is the backup for the bond as well. But we do have some available, which we're actually saving for infrastructure expenses going forward. We also have a separate stability account, which can be used, it's required by state law, that can be used if we lose revenues from one year to the next. Which in a case of, which we would probably draw into if we do end up with severe restrictions, we're going to lose a considerable amount of revenue as well.
But looking at that, that worst case situation is if we needed to do something because we have no water, and we have a big expense, bigger than what we're even talking about now with them.
We would probably have to.
We're only talking about trying to figure out what the problem is now with this money that we've authorized. We haven't gotten into fixing it.
Yes, if it was a significant amount, we could get started with what we have available, but then we'd probably have to go to a bond.
Sure, sure. Okay, any other questions on that?
Most, yeah.
Second? Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
It's done, thank you.